Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you to the City of Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting for July 5th, 2016. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Ashower.
Here.
Alderman Berry.
Here.
Alderman Vavir.
Here.
Alderman Davalos.
Here.
Alderman Goodman.
Here.
Alderman Hoffman.
Here.
Alderman Widener.
Here.
Alderman Wilson is excused.
Thank you, Emily. Would you please stand as you're able and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Every once in awhile, we have the pleasure to officially welcome a new member of our organization tonight. That member will join our Police Department, so I would invite Chris Maxwell and his family to come up here. We're gonna open this up a little bit. The rest of the family who want to come up and take pictures can come up here. You don't have to stay in your chairs. And we'll do the official swearing in.
He's being promoted.
Promoted, okay.
Yes. He's already been in the...
That's what I thought, yeah, I know. People don't tell me the details, Chris. Come on up, come on around.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. See, that's what I get for going on vacation for two weeks. I miss the details.
We gotta get rid of the chairs.
Yeah.
No, we gotta get the chairs out of here.
Guys gotta hear him, too. Alright, please raise your right hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Christopher Maxwell.
Having been appointed to the Office of Police Sergeant.
Having been appointed to the Office of Police Sergeant.
In the City of Warrenville.
In the City of Warrenville.
And the County of DuPage.
County of DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Sowmally swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Police Sergeant.
The Office of Police Sergeant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I know you will, Chris. And now for the official badge. Chris's wife will put the badge on, get some pictures of that. She's tempted, but she's gonna play it straight.
We practiced it.
Alright. Official Sergeant Maxwell.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I think it's worthwhile noting that Chris has been with the department for nine years, been an exemplary member of the Warrenville Police Department. He came to us from another suburb before he wisely made the decision that Warrenville was the best place to work. So, he came here and applied his skills and talents, worked very hard, was a member of our Traffic Safety Unit, also a Defensive Tactics Instructor, and I know that he's gonna do an excellent job as part of our management team. I think it's noteworthy to note that only about 11% of all career police officers are ever promoted past the rank of Patrol Officer. So, he's achieved a great milestone, and I'm sure it'll be the first of many advancements in his career. So, we welcome him, and thank you.
Thank you, family and friends, for coming tonight. And Chris, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
And you do not have to stay for the rest of the meeting. You're welcome. Thought I knew him pretty well. What am I thinking? We'll give them a minute. And one good thing is followed by another this evening. We have a presentation from Robert Bosch North America coming to Warrenville, and we are so excited to have these folks. So, Representatives from Bosch, would you please come to the podium and make your presentation and let us know what your plans are? And of course, introduce yourselves. We're ready. Thank you for your patience.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Ted Ford, and I'm responsible for our current facility, which is located in Broadview, Illinois, and also the project coordinator for our relocation project, which has started quite a long time ago, and we're excited to give you a little bit more information about Bosch's company and also about our search and our future project. So, I'll give a little bit of an overview of Bosch, and then why we chose Warrenville, and what our plans are, and then Mary Beth, who's from Whitney Architects, will go into details of what we're planning. So Bosch at its heart is a research company. I know a lot of you are aware of some of the products that Bosch makes, and hopefully have some at home, and also are driving around with many of our products. But really, here in the US, it's not as apparent of all the things that we do as if you were in Europe, or especially Germany. We are a German company, we're privately owned, but at the heart, we're a research company, and so our slogan "Invented for Life" is really at the heart of what we do. And we have over 56,000 researchers worldwide, and that's important because that's part of the project that we want to bring to Warrenville, is we want to build a building onsite that'll do some of our research and development for our division. So, I'll get into a little bit more detail about what we're doing. We're also a global network. Many, many folks aren't aware of how big Bosch is. We have over 375,000 employees worldwide, and in four major business units, which again, I'll talk about a little bit more in detail. Here in the US, we have quite a big presence, especially a lot of our manufacturing is in the southeast, but we do have a big presence in Illinois, and especially in Chicago. We have three current sites. Broadview is the location where we're relocating right now, and we also have a big plant in, or a big site in Mount Prospect, which is in our Power Tools Division, and a smaller one in Hoffman Estates. So, the four business sectors, we have Mobility Solutions. This is primarily our automotive business unit, has some other divisions along with it, but primarily automotive. And it's also the main division that'll be moving to Warrenville. So, the Warrenville Division owner is Automotive Aftermarket, and here we sell our products into the independent aftermarket, as well as the OE service units. We also do industrial technology. This is some of our packaging machines, as well as pneumatic and hydraulic systems. Energy and building technology, this is heat pumps, geothermal units, as well as security systems. And finally, consumer goods, which most people are aware of, which would be our dishwashers, refrigerators, and of course, the power tools. So, we like to say that there's really no car without a Bosch component in it, and that's really true. We're really very integrated into, of course, European cars. All the European cars have a great variety of Bosch units in it, but also, over the last 15 to 20 years, we've really gotten also into the major US automotive park as well. And that's where our automotive aftermarket division's really growing, is supplying the parts to these bigger volume of cars in the US. So, here's a little bit more specifics, especially about the Americas. We have 20% of the total market share of Bosch, which is, in 2015, was about 71 billion euros, and we have 41,000 associates in the US, and 39 manufacturing sites and over 100 total sites. So, again, this is a little bit of a big picture of Bosch. I think what you're more interested in, and what do we want to bring to Warrenville? So, currently, our location is in Broadview. That's, we've been in that location for over 40 years, and the reason we want to move is we've really changed what our primary focus is of what we did in Broadview. It started as a manufacturing site where we did re-manufacturing, and then it turned into a distribution center, and along the way, we started developing a lot of office space in that location. And so, we built an office building, and we converted a lot of our warehouse space to office space. And as we became more of, for the aftermarket division, more of sales and marketing and customer interface, we saw that the site in Broadview really didn't promote our corporate image. So, we've been looking for a new home. That's been a several-year project, and there were a lot of things that we were looking for. One was really a good customer image with good visibility from a marketing standpoint, and we wanted to be able to grow on this site. As I mentioned, there's three other locations within Illinois area, or within greater Chicago area, and some consolidation was, is certainly a possibility. And we also want to have really primarily good office space compared to like a renovated warehouse, in which we have now. We also see the need for, you know, good access to commuter space. Those of you familiar with the Broadview area, it's really kind of stuck in between the city and the suburbs, so kind of the worst of both worlds. And we see that in the western suburbs, we're kind of on the technology corridor, so that's the area we were focused in. So, the Warrenville site really brought together all of those points that we're looking for, and we're really excited about that project. We have about 500 associates that currently work in Broadview. All of those associates would come to the new site. As I mentioned, primarily office space, but we do have a certain amount of operations. That operations is research and development for our brake division. We also do warranty return and testing from our, the parts that we have in the field, and then we do a good bit of training on our diesel and gasoline systems, that we'd want to have a training center in this building, which Mary Beth will give you the details So, I think that's all I had. I'd certainly be willing to take any questions after Mary Beth's overview.
Hi, I'm Mary Beth Peters. I work for Whitney Architects, and I've been working with Bosch for quite a while on this project, and I've had about 14 years' experience with the Bosch Corporation. They will be a great neighbor. So, I'm gonna touch on the design details. That should come right after this. Okay, so, one of the things that Bosch likes about this location is the ability to create a corporate campus. So, in regards to the design, this would be their multifunctional building. Inside this building will house some training, product training for, mechanics will come and learn how to use the products that they have developed. Part of the building will be a brake lab for research and development. There'll be a warranty area where they receive parts and verify warranty information, and then they do some re-manufacturing of electronic components in this space, too. So, there's a lot going on in this space. What's exciting for Bosch is that they will have an office component, and then they will be able to house all of their operations close to that office, and it will be designed close to the southern perimeter, so that it will have close access to the office building. In regards to the existing office building, what they would like to do is update the design to their Bosch International Design specifications, so they will re-clad the building with a panel system that will be similar to what they are going to use for the finishes for the operations building. They would like to put signage along the 88 Highway, mostly for marketing purposes. They will not have any signage on the other side of the building, it's really just on this side. They want to update the finishes also in the front of the building. One of the other things that they really need is to have more visibility of the marquee in the front, so they would like to move that closer to where they have access to both directions, so both east and west, in regards to, right now, the signage is only accessible and visible from one direction, and they will be having people coming from both directions. In regards to the Plan Commission recommendations, just to give you an update, we will have our final documentation submitted on Friday, per their schedule, and we are currently in negotiation and communication with the adjacent property owner. There is a question on one of the north accesses between the two parking lots, and we're working with them to come to an agreement between the two properties, and we're hoping to have that by the end of the week. So, once again, if you have any additional questions, I just wanted to touch on the design, basically, so please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I would just ask roughly, what's the investment that's gonna be made by Bosch to move to this place, to our town?
Yeah, so the investment that we're...
Please, please, use the, thank you.
So, the investment for the operations building is roughly about $5 million, and then for the renovation of the existing building, it'll be a little bit over $8 million.
Wow, so that's wonderful. And about 500 employees initially?
That's correct, yes.
And then ultimately, do you anticipate a number that might be accommodated by that space?
Well, certainly, one of the advantages of that space was, it's about 19 acres, so there's certainly a growth potential there. There's no current plans for consolidation, but that's always been, let's say, a potential. As far as growth of our, of our existing area, we're designing it for a 10% growth over the next few years.
Wonderful. That's great. And clearly, you're gonna be committed to our community, 'cause you're buying the property. We like that very much, thank you. Questions from the council? Alderman Davalos?
Thank you. So, I understand the space increases. What about new hiring? Would there be any, I know you're gonna transfer the 500 employees. Do you anticipate over the years, or over the time, that there would be increased hiring for the new...
That was certainly one of the, one of the reasons that we were searching in the western corridor, because of the recruiting aspects of this area. So, I mean, with 500 employees, we always have a certain amount of growth and turnover, so that is one of the attractive parts of this area, is to be able to have that recruiting aspect of this area. And again, the design right now is for approximately 10% growth that we can fit into the building, so that, that would be, you know, would be in the business plan timeframe of three to five years. We would, let's say, we wouldn't, we're not planning on growth extending that amount.
Thank you.
Alderman Goodman?
Yes, what's the expected timing of all of this?
That's a good question. We hope to move the office building by March of next year. So, we're in the design phase right now, and in the final negotiations with the seller. So, we're hoping to close on the building before September, and then start construction at the end of the year, to be in by, by March of, in the office building. And then the operations building would begin construction next year, and we would hope to move in there by next summer sometime.
Sounds great, thank you.
Alderman Widener?
Thanks for the excellent presentation. I just had a question. You had mentioned that you'd be doing research and development surrounding gasoline and diesel engines?
Actually, we do training for gasoline and diesel engines, so we do injector training, so we teach service mechanics how to rebuild those in a service environment. The research that we do is for our brake divisions. We make brake pads, and what we do is the friction development at this location. So, that's the mixing and formulation for the friction of the brake pads.
Are there any emissions associated with either one of those types of...
No, we have, I mean, we currently do this in Broadview, and we have no emission reporting requirements, and everything's internal, so...
Great, thank you. Appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation, and welcome to Warrenville. We're delighted that you've chosen this site for your home, and we look forward to many, many years of having you as a corporate citizen.
Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Okay, on to the rest of the meeting. Next, we have citizens' comments. We have two folks signed up this evening, Bob Seabert and Pat O'Connor. Both of you have been here before, so, Bob, you wanna come up?
Bob Seabert, Albright Court. On June 23rd, there was a public hearing for TIF 4. I asked your TIF attorney the following question. Does the tax cap function within the TIF district as it does outside the TIF district to limit the property tax revenue to 5% or to CPI, whichever is lower? Your TIF attorney answered, "I do not know." I believe that the property taxpayers, not only in the TIF, but also within the City of Warrenville, deserve to know the true facts of what occurs. They should also know the true facts of what will or could occur within a TIF. How do we find and differentiate between opinion and facts? If you have not reviewed the actual property tax bills, TIF 2, TIF 1, 1991 to 2008, you do not understand what occurs within a TIF district and how the taxpayers are related, what they pay and what they do not pay. You are now getting ready to board the train for TIF 4, but you don't know the cost of the ticket, or where the train is going. I think that you need to determine what is occurring and the impact on the property taxpayers before you proceed.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay, I am, Pat, I want to only to tell the people up here, I talked to one of my hotmate, and it take the city van, and, and I start working at, started, and I start work at 4 o'clock, 2:11. And, and I talked to the city woman downstairs, downstairs, and I asked how I can get on the, the list to take me to work. The people stop running at 4 o'clock, no, sorry, 3:30. And I don't understand why it stopped at 3:30. I go to work at 4:00. I had no car and nothing, okay? I had a drop call. The people came and picked me up from the base bus. Everybody, I called the base bus, and it would come to my house to pick me up, and I said, like, I said, it come back and picked me up at work. And I don't understand why we not talking to the base bus. Some people walk, okay, it walk at 4 o'clock, 2:11. That's me, okay? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. I'm glad you got a good job. Okay, we'll move on to official and staff comments, beginning with the mayor. Two things tonight. One, July 8th is the last day for the Mayor's Fitness Challenge for this year, the Sixth Annual Fitness Challenge, so if you're remiss in recording your minutes, it's time to catch up. Remember, the reward is a wonderful t-shirt designed by a local graphic artist, provided by Central DuPage Hospital, and you get to come here and get your picture taken, and it's all official that you have completed the program. So, I hope those of you who are a little behind catch up by the 8th, get... So I hope those of you who are a little behind catch up by the 8th, get done, and we'll get the t-shirts ordered, and we'll look forward to the next fitness challenge next year. The other thing I wanted to highlight was, we had a terrific weekend this weekend for our Independence Day celebration. The weather cooperated nicely, but the biggest, I think, factor in the success of the weekend was the quality of the volunteers and the work that they put in to make this operation come off. We had terrific attendance, the parade was wonderful. Colin Wilkie is the head of the Fourth of July Committee. Colin, I want to thank you and all of the people that you've recruited to do this work for us. Most people don't understand, this is a year-round operation. These folks meet every month, all year round, to make sure the planning gets done and everything comes off as it should come off, as well as working the parade and working the events at Cerny Park. So a round of applause in your head for all of these good people that make that happen. Again, it was a wonderful weekend. The fireworks were probably the best ever, at least from what I've heard from people. I was pretty impressed. They always start out kind of humdrum, you know, and then at some point, they either come together and you go, wow, or you don't. But this weekend, it was a double wow. It was very well done, so, very well done. Thank you again, Fourth of July Committee, great job this year also. That's all I have. Clerk?
I have two things, Mayor. I bring greetings from our treasurer, Bob Johnson. I got to see him last night. He was down, came down to watch the fireworks, which were absolutely awesome. You're right, I think one of the best that we've had in many, many years. And so he said he misses everybody and said to say hello. And then, another year, another fabulous birthday party. Thank you, city of Warrenville. July the 4th, you put on a parade and a picnic and fireworks. I didn't have to do anything, you know? I just, everybody came and helped me celebrate. And I did order the weather, though, so I might take credit for that, but, thank you. And yes, Mayor, you're right, the number of volunteers is awesome, and they can always use more, so if you ever want to be part of it. One of the fun things, we had the Park District put on some great things for the children. And if anybody were down there, they had this bubble ball soccer, huge blow-up bubbles that you sat in, and we sat and laughed for probably an hour and a half watching these people try to maneuver this, in this big bubble, and standing on their heads and falling all over the place. It was a great time. And my great-granddaughter was able to join us on Sunday, so she had a great time, too. So, thank you again, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Emily. Also, yes, thanks to the Park District for all the events that they put on, of course, the firecracker race on the Fourth of July morning, which attracted nearly 400 people, again, a lot of families. It was really a lot of fun to see the different folks out there. From the young man, I led the race on my bike, and I had to really push to stay ahead of the front runner because this guy was flying. He finished that 3.1 miles in just over 15 minutes, which is pretty darn impressive. So I had trouble staying ahead of him, but we had all the way that to the older folks who were finishing up, but it was great to see everyone out there. A lot of families, a lot of little kids running with their moms and dads, just a great event. So thanks to the Park District, thanks for reminding me. Treasurer is not here. Alderman? Alderman, oh, nope. No takers, what do you know? Okay. Administrator?
I have nothing yet tonight, thank you.
Thank you, John, and Attorney.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks, Ken. We're going to move to the approval of the agenda this evening. I'm going to suggest the change before we have the approval. With the agreement of the council, I will eliminate the need for an executive session this evening. You have a staff memo, which explains the issue that we potentially, we're going to discuss. If everyone understands that memo and agrees with the recommendation, I would remove the necessity for an executive session this evening from the agenda. Is everybody okay with that? Okay, very good. Then we'll move on to the approval of the agenda as amended. Alderman Widener?
Thank you, Mayor. With the deletion of the executive session from tonight's agenda, I move we approve the agenda for July 5th, 2016 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second.
Alderman Bavir, second, thank you. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Okay, Alderman Hoffman?
I'd like to pull off A and C, 6A and 6C.
Okay. Do the seconder and the motioner agree to that change?
Yes.
Okay, all right, then we have an agenda approved this evening, altered in a couple of ways. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved this evening. We have the need to approve a couple of sets of minutes also. Alderman Widener?
Move to approve the minutes of the June 20th, 2016 City Council Regular Meeting and to approve the minutes of the June 20th, 2016 City Council Closed Session.
Second.
Second again by Alderman Bavir. Any discussion on those minutes? Alderman Goodman?
I'll be abstaining.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved, thank you. I will read the consent agenda as amended for this evening. Item 6B, accept staff recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance number 3015, amending the city code to reduce the number of Class A2 liquor licenses from nine to eight. 6D, accept Public Safety Committee recommendation, approve a memorandum of understanding between Community Unit School District 200 and the Warrenville Police Department. E, accept Plan Commission recommendation and direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance to approve revised final plan of subdivision, revised preliminary and final planned unit development plans and site-specific amendments and exceptions for Robert Bosch North America Corporate Offices and new research and development facility at 28301 Ferry Road in Cantera, Subarea E. F, receive and file approved minutes of the Board of Fire and Police Commission Regular Meeting held on May 24th, 2016. G, receive and file draft minutes of the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals Regular Meeting held on June 27th, 2016. H, receive and file report of invoices paid up to June 29th, 2016 in the amount of $74,894.83. And I authorize expenditures for invoices due honor before July 18th, 2016 in the amount Alderman Widener?
Move to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor Bromel.
Second.
Motion and a second. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Hoffman?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Thank you, Emily. Again, Robert Bosch, North America, welcome to Warrenville. We'll return then to item 6A. Alderman Hoffman, would you like to bring that forward?
Accept staff's recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance 3014, calling for a public hearing and a joint review board meeting to consider the designation of a redevelopment project area and the approval of a redevelopment planned and project for the Southwest District slash Route 59 corridor tax increment financing district, TIF number four.
Second.
Second. Alderman Bavir, discussion? Alderman Hoffman?
I just, I don't believe we should be using these TIFs until the problem with the statute's corrected. It's a flawed tool. As our county clerk had said, it's raising property taxes inside and outside the TIF district, and I just don't think we should be using it until the problem's corrected. I'll be voting no on this, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Alderman Davalos?
Thank you. My only comment on that would be that sometimes public hearings are a great venue for bringing all of this up, for people to come with their concerns and their questions and how it all works, and it's on record, and we've had a lot of success with these public hearings, getting input. Sometimes things change. I just think they're a healthy way to bring the community into the discussion and to get some of these questions answered, so I would vote yes, just to keep the process moving. Thank you.
Okay, Alderman Goodman?
Yes, my comment is that TIF is a tool that our staff has been very successful at using in the past, and also that the meeting of the Joint Review Board is for the purpose of having representatives from the other overlying taxing districts weigh in and provide us with their input, which we have not received on this project so far. We certainly need their input in order to consider this project fully, and I think we should definitely move forward.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Widener?
Yes, I just wanted to mention that we have a great example in the outskirts of town of one of the most successful, if not the most successful, TIF in the state of Illinois, that being Cantera. We've utilized that for a lot of great economic benefits and opportunities in Warrenville, and we have a number of professional staff and plan commissioners who were very instrumental and very involved in helping us to craft the agreements and to bring that TIF to fruition. And also, we generally hire consultants to advise us and guide us every step in the way, so I feel very secure in moving forward with this. We've had a lot of success. Thank you.
Alderman Hoffman?
This is not a problem that can be solved at the city level, it's a problem with the state statute. I just feel it's irresponsible to be using something that's known to be raising taxes artificially on the taxpayers. Once that money's taken out of their pocket, it'll never be given back, or decreasing their life, not their life, but their quality of life, and I don't think we should be doing it until the problem's corrected. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, may I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Hoffman?
No.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Motion carries. I would just add parenthetically that without our TIF number one, we would not be welcoming Robert Bosch North America to Warrenville this evening, so I fail to see how that's a flawed tool when it works so well for us. Item 6C, Alderman Hoffman?
Accept staff recommendation and pass resolution 2016-23 establishing a land trust for the city to hold real property and authorizing the mayor and the city administrator to execute assignments, assigning all of the part, or all or part of the beneficial interest of the trust.
Second.
Second by Alderman Bavir. Comments? Alderman Hoffman?
Well, due to, it was a closed session, I'm going to leave it at, I'll be voting no on this. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from folks? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Hoffman?
No.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have nothing under the regular agenda, nothing under unfinished business, nothing under new business, and nothing under closed session, so we have only one last item this evening. Who would like to do it? Alderman Widener?
I move we adjourn?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you very much.